Everybody ready?
Yeah.
All right. This is -- mics on?
Yep.
Okay. We'll call the work of the board. Patrick, you want to lead off in this room?
I will be glad to do that, but we have Tim Jones here. He's got his name on the item, so if you don't mind him, introduce the team and I'll provide any feedback if needed.
Is this hot? We have tonight with us, I think speaking for the group introducing Palisades Development is Tom Jones, and he'll be speaking to be -- but I think someone is going to make an introduction.
Yes, thank you. I was just going to say Tom Jones and Tim Jones caught my eye to begin with as well.
Yeah. No relation.
And I intended to put Tom Jones. I went back and checked the email that it was in fact Tom Jones, so.
It was. So I'll pass it over to them.
Most of these people don't even know who Tom Jones is.
Thomas Jones.
But it's not unusual to be loved by someone. You know what I'm talking about?
Actually, I do remember Tom Jones, and thank you for dating me.
Well, I remember him too, so very well.
I fill a good company then. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Ledford. I am with Triangle Real Estate out of Gastonia, Gaston County. At one time, it used to be about 45 minutes from here, now it's an hour and a half. Anyway, we are a multifamily developer of apartments. That's what we do. I work for the third generation, the grandson of the founder, been in business about 40 years. We have multiple properties, mainly in North and South Carolina with a couple in the Georgia area. We build about 1,200 to 1,500 apartments a year. We look for areas like the Indian Trail area. We stay out of the bigger metro areas just because we enjoy the small-town feel and such. I'm glad to answer any questions that anybody has, but that's sort of us in a nutshell. Our apartments are what we like to view as A-level apartments, and Tom's will come up and give you a slideshow here in a minute of what we're building currently at other places here in North and South Carolina. It's usually, and I don't know how it works here, it's we have all frigated communities, clubhouse, pool, the units themselves, one, two, and three-bedroom, granite countertops, nine-foot-high ceilings with crown molding, this type of thing, top-level appliances, we think. And that's pretty much it for what I'll tell you. I wanted to keep it brief because I know we just wanted to do an intro tonight, so if there's no questions, I'll turn it over to Tom, and he can give you more of the technical details. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Tom Jones, and I'm apparently a celebrity here tonight, but I do sing, but I don't get paid for it. So the project that we're talking about, that we're thinking about here tonight is Palisades and Indian Trail. The picture here is a similar project. This one's actually in Fletcher, North Carolina, that could have a similar entrance to the project we're thinking about. It's just nice to see kind of an entrance of a similar project, to see how these projects can look nice by this developer. The parcel that we're talking about is about 10 acres. It says site on this map. You can see the handy properties, Sun Valley High School and Radiator Road are all highlighted there. US Highway 74, Independence is up on the top right of your screen. So the property is located on Wesley Chapel, Stouts Road. It's basically kind of a catty corner from the Berry Plastics. It's near the intersection of Orr Road and the railroad tracks. The next slide is showing the, I guess, the potential widening of Wesley Chapel-Stouts Road, how there's the proposed roundabouts, and this parcel is roughly halfway between Lowe's and the Sun Valley Commons. With this configuration of Boulevard, it'd be a right-in, right-out configuration to the site, which would be fine. If a car wanted to go towards Sun Valley Commons, they could turn right. If they want to go back towards Lowe's, they could just go to the roundabout and come back that direction. I keep looking down. So I had in your package some conceptual plans. This kind of zooms in a little bit more to what we're thinking about for this property. What we're showing here is a site plan with a single entrance towards the southern side of the property. The thought there is that there's potential for a bridge to go above the railroad, and we try to move the driveway down, anticipation of them raising the road. So that's why the entrance is not shown in the kind of center of the property. All of these, the buildings shown here would be three stories, all the apartment buildings, with the exception of the clubhouse, which would be near the entrance, and there's three smaller garage buildings that are shown kind of the central part of the site. We're proposing right now 192 units. The largest buildings would have 30 units, and the smallest would have 12 units, so in that range. 60 of the units would be one-bedroom, 96 would be two-bedrooms, and 36 would be three-bedrooms, so roughly half would be two-bedrooms. We're showing parking spaces. Currently, we're showing about 352 spaces. Water will be provided by Union County Public Works, and wastewater would be Union County Public Works. All of this would be private drives and parking spaces, and like Jeff mentioned, the developer would like to have gated access if that's allowed by the town. The current zoning is I want, so we'd anticipate having to have a conditional zoning process or rezoning, depending on what the staff would recommend for the way forward to obtain The next slide. This shows kind of what some of the buildings would typically look like. You'll find that they're nicely finished on all sides. There's not really a back of the building in terms of the facade and in terms of elevation. There's brick usually like to the 2/3 mark, like two of those stories, and then hardy board siding above that. They have the architectural asphalt shingles, and this shows that all the apartment units themselves are three stories, and the garage and clubhouse, the single story. Go back to the site plan in just one more minute. Part of this, the clubhouse will have a pool, probably saltwater. I don't know if that's been determined, but that's what they typically do these days. There's also a proposal for a playground, so we're in the middle part of the site, and a dog park has been a fairly standard amenity that's been provided. This is like the typical elevation showing the three stories and the height. One of the more common architectural features these days on some of the buildings would be these cupolas above that, so we would present kind of the building height. The typical building height being the roof, but then there'll be some architectural elements above that if this project moves forward. So I think that's all the slides I have. I'd like to go ahead and just open it up to questions because I think it's important to be able to respond. Do you have any questions at this time?
I just have a question. You know, we seem to be getting bombarded with apartments, and I don't mean anything bad by this question, but you know, the average person, and I'm a fairly average person, I think, would think, you wouldn't be building these apartments if you didn't think people would move into them. But you know, you look at Charlotte, you look at here, you look at, it's going apartment crazy. What is it that you guys see that makes you think you're going to fill all these apartments? Again, I'm not questioning, trying to be smart, I'm just curious.
Right.
How you come up with this.
Well, let me go through the rental rates, just to give you an idea, and you all know your community better than we do, but I think, and I'll let Jeff speak to this a little bit too, but you know, obviously, they find this to be an appealing community, and I think a lot of people would, and therefore, they see that there's going to be demand there. And I think this would be around the 20th project I've done with this group, pretty much all in western North Carolina, actually. This would be as far east as we've done. We, our firm normally, we only go about an hour, hour and a half. This is about two hours from our office, and one reason is because it's a good group and they do good projects, and I think you can see for yourself, and they give you some other examples, but I do think that this is a desirable community, and there's demand there, and I don't think there would be any issue with them filling up. So that's, I think it's just really kind of supply and demand that is a desirable community, and they make a good product that people would find appealing, and they would be able to rent them. The rental rates anticipated, these are tentative and subject to change, but one-bedroom's about $950 a month, two-bedrooms around $1,100, and three-bedrooms $1,300. Those are tentative, kind of comparable to other developments that they have. Of course, subject to change, but that's what, if it opened today, that's the most likely rates they would set. So while that seems like a lot, and it is, it's more than I have for my mortgage, I think it's considered typically workforce housing in the places where these developments go. It's not affordable housing, if you will, but it's also not unattainable by working families.
Do you want to add anything before we?
So how do we do it? We do it a couple of different ways. Part of what I do, part of what my job is, is Tom's a professional engineer, civil engineer by trade. My boss is a civil engineer, Tom is also a professional engineer. My forte, if I have such a forte, is I know the areas. I usually know where the high schools are. I tend to know the communities. I'm from Gastonia, been there all my life, except for a 10-year hiatus up in Asheville. And usually what my boss will do, because he doesn't always know these areas, you know, Indian Trail, he's heard of it, but for instance, I knew the high school. He'll ask me what the high schools are for, there's 10 high schools in Union County. I generally know where, I've been to every one of them, I know where they are. I have a feel sort of for where the communities are, or who they are, the growth, this type of thing. But what we look for, and I think I alluded to earlier, we're in smaller-town areas that you've just, you've heard of, but don't, we're, like I said, we don't build in Charlotte. It scares us to death. The real estate's just through the ceiling. Same thing sort of happening over here also. It's spreading south, as I'm sure you folks know, on a daily basis. But as Tom said, we're not affordable housing folks, but by the same token, we're filling these things up. Craziest thing I've ever really been involved in, to a degree. Our occupancy rate for our complexes stays between 92% and 98%. I think some of it is the trend that we're seeing is people, and I have people, I'm 58, you have people my age, they're tired of it. They're tired of the grass, they're tired of the maintenance, apartments are an option, or they're in transition, trying to figure out something. The young folks, you go to downtown Charlotte, what you're looking at here is going to be double. It's going to be 2,000-plus a month. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, David, but that's sort of what we try to do, is we feel like it's affordable housing, and it's been working for us. I also wanted to mention also, we're a long-term holder. We, in five years, we would still have this project. We've got over 80 complexes in the history of the company. We've sold one complex that we've built. We're still holding on to them. And the owner is in his mid-60s, but my boss is in his 30s, so we tend to think that we'll be around for a while.
Sure. Hi. I'm Jerry, by the way, and thanks for coming to Indian Trail with your project. I have a couple of questions about that location in particular. Why that location? I mean, you're, there's a lot of land here in Indian Trail, and that is right across the street from Berry Triplast or Berry Global now. It's an industrial site, and of course, that railroad is run by CSX and has some spurs on there. So I believe that site presently is zoned industrial, light industrial, if I'm correct?
It is.
Okay. And you know, one of the things here in this town that we definitely need is more business, more industrial. It's part of our comprehensive plan, one of our goals to work, play, and live here. We're getting a lot of live here, but I hate to see personally, see this light industrial site be taken off to become a multifamily, high-density right there. Also, we have a large bridge that will happen at some point, as long as Wesley Chapel-Stouts will be widened again at some point, but it's been delayed. How many, Patrick or Tim, how many apartments are in the pipeline right now that have come before us that are in the, looking to be approved? I know the 650 across the street, and there was another one that was just two weeks ago, right in that same area, for like 300?
I'll take this one.
Thank you.
In this particular area, we do have behind Lowe's, multifamily. Also, the one that came in before us, just right behind Sun Valley Market Common Theater, that's about 200-some units. So in between Independence Boulevard to Sun Valley Commons, we do have probably three apartment complexes and townhomes, couple of multifamily behind the Lowe's. Now, we do have other ones, the townhomes within the Sun Valley Commons, like Sage Craft, that's 82, I think 82 units, it's in that range. But I would say among 30 developments on the drawing board right now, probably half of them, they do include multifamily apartments.
So to speak a little bit to this particular piece of property, I'm not going to suggest that you couldn't have any industrial use here. Obviously, you could, but it's not overly large piece of property, and it does, the railroad is nearby, there is a road between, but it wouldn't be enough property to have one of these large job creators, these industries that you really think of when you think of the large manufacturing with hundreds of jobs, it's just, it's not that large a piece of property. Certainly, you could have some small industry there. I'm not going to suggest you can't. This is similar to a project these guys did in Asheville called Avalon, where there was a railroad spur or railroad track there too. I don't believe that's caused any nuisance to the residents, to my knowledge, and likewise, it was similar size, and to get a spur to this project, it wouldn't be realistic. So it is zoned industrial, and you could have some industry there, but I don't think it's going to be a large job creator for the community. So I do think this is a good use for the project, as far as you get the density, you get the multifamily in these areas that's, has other commercial areas nearby, especially if the road gets widened and these paths get created along the side of the road, the residents could walk to these, easily walk to the shopping centers. I do think it's a good use of the property for multifamily.
Question?
Are we meeting the buffers? The buffers look pretty narrow.
The detailed landscaping hasn't been designed yet. We would obviously, as we go through the formal process, we'll make sure that we meet buffer requirements.
And then go back and explain, all right, I see the one entrance, and where is the second entrance going to be proposed?
Currently, there's no second entrance proposed. An entrance could be provided off of Orr Road, for instance, if the town required it. The fire code requires the second entrance when you get to 200 units. If you're less than 200, one entrance is allowable if you have, if all the buildings are fully sprinkled. So one entrance is currently proposed. The site plan could be set up to create a second entrance if the town felt it was necessary to Orr Road. We'd probably want to gate it in that situation, just for emergency vehicles only.
Anyone else? Patrick?
I'm on the way through council.
Currently, is the site, does the site contain any sewer or water from the county? Is that something where you'd have to build a pump station to get that in there, or could you tap into something that's existing?
We anticipate having to provide a pump station on the property. We're showing it in the bottom right-hand corner of the site plan, in which case, it would be owned and operated by the, by Union County Public Works, and they've already said that they would accept that, and it would have to be pumped. I believe it's across railroad tracks is where it'd have to go. So the hope is that this could help open up sewer to this area by having a pump station on this property. But the pump, but the pump station wouldn't just be for the development would be public.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, the comment is, you know, we have a lot of apartments coming, or proposed to come here, and I'm trying to figure out what sets this apartment project apart from the others. And just be quite frank, it just looks like it's a cookie-cutter apartment, drawings that I've seen before. So is there anything exciting about this project that would, you know, if we have limited capacity as far as apartments, why we may want to select this one versus a different one?
Well, we're not flashy. This is not, this team isn't going to come up here and wow you with, you know, something amazing you've never seen before. I think what you're going to get is something that's solid, you're going to get a good product, you're going to get a good developer, you're going to get a good neighbor. You're going to get somebody that's going to be there if there's any kind of problem anywhere near here that may be related to them. If you call them, they're going to take care of it. What you're going to get is that. You're going to get an honest, good product, you're going to get a good neighbor, you're going to get somebody that's in the community. You know, I don't know that I'm, that we're going to offer anything truly unique to Indian Trail. I don't know that we are, but I do think we're going to offer a really good place for people to live. I think they're going to like living there. I think that's one of the reasons the occupancy rates are so good, because people like living there, and they keep renting them. So I don't know that, it's probably not the answer you need, but I think that's what we offer, is it's a good product and they'll be a good neighbor.
How many parking spacious do you anticipate putting in there, if you don't mind me asking?
Sure. Right now, we're showing about 1.83 per unit. I think your, the typical code, I think, in the town is about two to one. The 1.83 is actually a little more than probably that they really need for, based on many other developments that they have. It's approaching two to one, but it's 1.8 right now, 1.83. There's a little block on C-200 of your screen, I don't know if you can see it with the magnification, but some of those statistics are in that development block on the top right of that C-200 page.
Yeah, I'm good.
Anyone else have a comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thanks for having us.
Patrick, do you have any closing words?
We have time.
You have three minutes.
Okay. I did get a chance to meet with the design team, and we worked closely with them on putting the presentation together too. But in regard to the entrances, we will require two entrances. We have discussed that with police and fire, and we do feel that because of the bridge location and the track right there, that could cause some issues with response time for emergency vehicles, so definitely, we will require two. And the other comment that we shared with the team too is, when we put the TIA together, we're going to have to include all these apartments that they were proposed before you guys came in, and to make it a fair process, we will do the same thing to them too, just to see the impact. And definitely, I think our engineering department looked at the bridge, probably the bridge will take from the top of the track going toward your entrance about 950 feet. So I did make your team aware that, you know, could be some restriction in regard to access the site.
Yes. We took that in consideration, and went and moved the entrance as far as possible on the property, anticipation of that bridge. I didn't hear about the second entrance, but the site can certainly accommodate that in the area where the dog park is shown. We'll have to rework that a little bit, but it can handle that, and Orr Road is right there, so that's feasible.
And definitely, as Mr. had brought up, we shared with the team to the buffer all the way around the site. And the last comment I would like to make is that among all the apartments that we received, all the proposed one in the area, if I take your two-bedroom, probably, did you say it's $1,100 per month? Probably the lowest one that was shared with us, about $1,450. So I just want you to be aware of that, that that's the cheapest in town, so I don't know if you could strategize around that or not, but it is what it is. Like you said, your product is your product, but I wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, three minutes, and we'll start.
Do we have a gavel?
Yeah. Yeah. Gavel.
Can I have quiet, please? Thank you. This time, if you put your cellphones on silent or vibrating, if you have to take a call, please step outside. I'd like to call the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for Tuesday, August 13, 2019, order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a moment of silence. At this time, I have a quick message. Captain Kobel's left to go to Ms. Howe. She was in a car accident, and she won't be attending tonight, but she is okay. So our prayers are with her. At this time, are there any additions or deletions to the meeting?
I have some. I have one.
Okay.
7D, I'd like to add, approve R-908, 13-01, LCG bonds assurance regarding parks and recreation projects.
Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Are there any other additions and deletions?
Well, excuse me, on old business, comprehensive plan update, that really should be a discussion item. I'm not ready to take any action this evening.
That's okay. You don't have to take action on it.
Motion to approve.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the amended agenda. Mr. McIntyre's made the motion, all in favor. Motion approved unanimously. We have no presentations at this time. I will open the floor for public comments. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the Internet. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be directed to the entire council as a whole and not, and within reasonable standards of courtesy, we ask the audience as well as speakers to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or council reasonably believe will eminently result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor. If you have a grievance, concern, or complaint related to a specific town employee, we respectfully request that prior to airing that grievance here during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of us on council with your concern. We respect your right to be heard, and we ask you to respect our town employees' right to a fair hearing on your grievance. First up, Gail Furr. Once you state your name, your time will begin.
My name is Gail Furr. I live at 1,002 Horton Bridge Court in Brandon Oaks. Dear respectable members of the Indian Trail Council, I'm writing to you to alert you concerning an event that occurred recently, on July 30th and on July 31st, 2019, a road who began to tear apart- who began to tear apart the cul-de-sac of Horton Ridge Court in Brandon Oaks. There was a lot of heavy machinery in the small cul-de-sac, and during those two days, making navigation, making navigation around the area made it difficult. And when the paving began, half one day and half the other day, it then became literally impossible for myself and my husband, who is disabled, to access our home, which was in the back of the cul-de-sac. I was forced to park in the nearby shopping center, and my husband, at one point, after being dropped off by a friend, had no choice but to navigate through our neighbors and our own lawns to get home. This was not an easy task for him, as he walks with a cane in order to maintain his balance. He could have easily tripped on the grass and could have been seriously injured. Also, we had a new neighbor who was moving his end with a truck, that they needed to have unloaded at the end of the cul-de-sac. Since they had no choice but to drive over the freshly paved surface in order to unload the truck, their heavy truck left unsightly, now apparently permanent marks in the freshly paved cul-de-sac. We are notifying you of these displeasing and concerning matters because, if proper notice had been provided to the residents of the cul-de-sacs, of which none was provided to any of us, not the dates or the plan of execution, these unfortunate matters noted above, among others, possible situations that may have arisen due to your negligence, could have been avoided. Luckily, no one was overly impacted, but still, a simple notification, a common courtesy, would have been nice and appropriate to have been received. Please then, if you would, be so kind to make sure that any future plans of the similar nature are ever in the works by your agency, we ask that proper notice be provided to all of the residents, so as to, we are able to help to avoid any possible troubling situations that could occur. Your constituents would appreciate such actions by you. Certainly, there is no adequate time, certainly, there was adequate timing for a notice since the date this contract was approved. Thanking you for your time and review of this situation, it is greatly appreciated. Respectfully submitted, Gail Furr.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Meg Fielding.
Meg Fielding, 1011 Council Fire Circle. Considering the current news articles about the danger of blue-green algae to pets and possibly to people, I urge the town to check the ponds within the city limits to discover if it is a threat to Indian Trail residents and pets. Furthermore, I urge the town to use social media and other methods of community communication to reassure residents of your concern and your actions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close the public comments and open up the council feedback. Anyone? Mr. Cohen?
Yes, I'm just curious. Was there any notification sent to Brandon Oaks, or, or to the HOA, or, I mean, that, that is alarming.
Yeah, it's written in the contract that the contractor has to give notification before the work is began. Unfortunately, that particular road did not occur, and it's unfortunate, unfortunately that happened, but the contract was notified, we got the phone call, he's been put on notice, and hopefully it doesn't happen again.
So the contractor, so, did the contractor let the town know when, when they were going to go out there and do the work, or?
Yeah, they gave us a heads up, but again, we rely on them to go out there and actually give out the flyers and everything to the homeowners, ahead of time.
Okay.
And unfortunately, we're not told if that's happened or not, now he's going to have to do that.
Well, are they going to go out there and fix the road out there where, where the?
We're going to take a look at that, I wasn't aware of the, the pattern or whatever's out there on the paper.
Okay, and, 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 you know, I'm, I'm not in the future, because I'm, I'm thinking, you know, if it were my neighborhood, they probably would contact, and I don't know if they do this in Brandon Oaks or not, they'd probably contact the HOA, because the HOA would be probably the better of, of the ways to contact us in my neighborhood, because they have everybody's name and number, I don't know, you know, they, we've got communications where we got the next door and put all that out, so that, so none of that was, next door didn't have that, and I'm sure you guys have next door neighbor, whatever, on the, on your computer, if you don't, some kind of form of communication should, should be, and, yeah, we're sorry. Hopefully, there's a live and learn, you know? I think the town did a good thing because they're, they're repaving those roads, it's unfortunate that, that, that we get out there to fix roads that people complain about, and, and then in turn, we think we're doing a good job, and then find out that somebody didn't communicate and let the people know that we were out there, so what we're really trying to do is be helpful, and in turn, when we're being helpful, it didn't end up being because it inconvenienced people because they didn't know, and, and they should have known, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, the way these asphalt contractors are, is they get pulled off from day to day, and unfortunately, they can't sit there and commit to all the streets at one time, and stay in the area, it's just the way the business works, and unfortunately, they need to do a better job, and we need to do a better job.
Well, if that's the case, they should at least give them a timeframe, you know? Just because they're not exactly sure when it's going to happen, they should have a timeframe of knowing when it's going to happen.
Well, that's what the flyer's for, I mean, they should give them a 24 hours notice that, look, you know, you don't, you need to get your, your cars off the streets, because you know, certain, certain roads, they still can't on-street park there, so that's another reason why you have to give them a notice.
Is 24 hours notice really a long enough time? I don't, I guess we need, kind of need to look at that, 24 hours is really a short period of time.
Is it 48 or 24 in the contract? It's 48 in the contract, sorry.
Did he, nobody knocked on a door, nothing, so, yeah, so that, I mean, that's, that's a, a good thing that didn't, that didn't come good, because I'm sure you'll enjoy the benefits of having a nice roads, but not the fact that you had, couldn't get in your house and get to get in and out, so I, I understand that, and hopefully in the, in the past, no, in the future.
And thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. Well, well, you know, I guess, I guess you had to ask an engineer that, you know?
I'll tell you the reason why we fixed it, the, it's the cul-de-sac that was the problem, but since they were very there, and it's not a long road, we went ahead and did the whole road in a way we don't have to come back in the future, just to do a stem of a cul-de-sac.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so get it all done, get it over with.
Mr. Morse?
So, do you use the same contractor for these road pavings?
It's just calling who gets the low bid.
So, does this, does this particular contractor have more roads to do?
Yes, and this, this particular contract, I got the contract last year, so we, we know him very well, he, he does a good job, unfortunately, his people underneath him didn't do their job.
Right, so it, it sounds like, and I'm...
Yeah, I understand.
It sounds like we contract, we hire a contractor to go and pave the street, and then we rely, the residents rely on the contractor to notify them when they're coming. Would it, should we assume more ownership of this, and perhaps?
Well, the problem with that is the scheduling, because they can't, the way their business works, they can't give us a, a big enough heads up for us to do, use staff to go out there and do the heads up. We could give them a week's notice to say, okay, well, they're going to be there next week sometime, but I can't give them a certain day, unfortunately.
But that would, would that be better than what, what we have right now?
Well, we did that before in the past, is give residents notices, like, okay, you're going to, they're going to be there the next week or two, and then the same thing happened last year where it came the next day, and then they didn't notify them 48 hours in advance, and it still blew up in our face, so.
So that's the same contractor?
Yes.
Okay. So can you not put some language in there, that if they failed to notify someone, and they inconvenienced the residents like this, that you, you know, that paycheck that you were hoping to get for this paving is going to get dinged? Is there, can we put some language in there, or?
I think, I think what we're going to do after this incident is, we would like him to let us know what street he's going to be on, ahead of time, and we'll make sure our staff out there, and make sure, we'll check with the neighbors to make sure that they got the flyer, and we'll verify his schedule. I think in my opinion, probably this is the best way of doing it, so that way, he doesn't have to make the mistakes again, and then we charge him money for not doing his job, we will make sure that we're out there when his equipment is out there. The only item I like to mention is sometimes, it's very difficult for all the asphalt contractor to make sure that they're going to get the asphalt from the plant, because certain plants, they provide many contractors, but that's not an excuse, though.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, that brings us to the law enforcement update, Captain Cobal said to remove him if he wasn't back? Okay. We will either postpone that, or till later in the meeting, or just remove it. Consent agenda, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion, all in favor. That would be unanimous. We have a public hearing, for a public hearing one is ZM 2019 0046, near Crooked Creek Park, 14.34 acres, ordinance number 316. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. This is for 6111 Seacrest Shortcut Road, it's a zoning map amendment. Location? It's along Seacrest Shortcut Road, whoops, sorry. Three parcels shown there. There's some subject property photo, looking southwest across property at Seacrest-Shortcut Road. The request is to rezone approximately 14.34 acres from conditional use district, general business district, CUD-GBD, to general business district. The applicant is the town. The purpose of the request is a rezoning due to an expired conditional use district parcels. The planning board voted six to zero to make a favorable recommendation to town council. Here's the existing zoning map. Showing the three parcels there on the map. Here's a future land use map in the comprehensive plan, it's in the Crooked Creek Village, and the large area in this zone was, in the future, to be mixed use. The zoning map recommendation, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan for land use and housing. It's a reasonable request, the planning board voted to recommend approval at the July 16th meeting, staff recommends approval. So town council action is to receive this information at the hearing, and I'm not sure if anyone has signed up for public comments.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open and close the public comments, there was no one that signed up, and leave it to the council for discussion and/or motion.
I have a question.
Yes.
I can, I can vaguely recall that we discussed this item with Mr. Burhans sometime in the past year, where we had to change the zoning on that, if I'm not mistaken. Patrick, I don't know if you recall, I think, when, when that came from Mr. Burhans, the applicant, or the, had some special condition on there, that we had to, that we were asked to basically revert to. So I'm wondering if that was done, and what is, I'm, I'm a little confused here, because to me, we went through this step already, but I may be mistaken, I know that particular piece of property was, we, we had addressed that with Burhans before, so.
Go back to the...
Yeah, go, if you, yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Because this is part of the, the process that Burhans...
Started?
Started.
Okay.
He brought it to you as one of the items to notify you that it had expired, and if, if he had permission from council to go ahead and pursue a rezoning.
Okay.
And so this is the actual rezoning from that.
That clears it up, all right. So my memory's not bad, then, just a little shady.
No, 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 it's, it's right on.
Thank you, that's it, that's, that's all I have.
Any other questions? If not, we need two motions.
So I'll make the motion, oh, sorry, any, any questions before I make the motion on this? So, I'll make the motion for the required consistency with findings, as read into the record by staff.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion, all in favor. That would be unanimous.
And motion, the second motion would be a final decision to approve as presented, as read into the record by staff.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to approve as presented, all in favor. That's unanimous also.
Thank you, sir.
May I read, read the blurb as, as part of that? Yeah. And that helps, because I know which, which way this needs to go now. The proposed UDO amendment is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan. Land use and housing goal number three, the proposed map amendment will improve existing Indian Trail neighborhoods to create strong, vibrant communities as it rezones a property with an expired conditional use district designation. This rezoning request is reasonable and is in the public interest, because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of land use and housing. It is consistent with the adopted plans within the town of Indian Trail.
Okay, just for, just for my own happiness, could you just make that first motion again, now that you actually heard the consistency?
The second motion, yes.
First one?
First one.
The first one, the consistency finding, now that you actually heard them.
Okay, so, motion one would be to make the required consistency findings, as just read into the record by staff.
Okay, Mr. McIntyre's remade that motion, all in favor? Okay, approved, that's all right, we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to public hearing number two, CZ 2019 0050, Faith Church Road, Highwood Drive, 6.33 acres, ordinance number 317. Mr. Jones?
Thank you again. As you mentioned, this is a conditional zoning for a piece of property, as you see on the location map, that is along Faith Church Road, rectangular site, for the most part, on the side of the industrial park, Indian Trail Industrial Park, and across from the residential neighborhoods there. Here are a couple photographs, the top photograph looking north along Faith Church Road with property on the left, the bottom photograph looking directly at property across Faith Church Road. It's already been cleared. The request, conditionally rezone approximately 6.33 acres from regional business district to conditional zoning light industrial district. The applicant is Faith Commercial Partners, LLC. Purpose of the request is to construct four light industrial buildings. The planning board voted six-zero to make a favorable recommendation to town council. There's the concept plan. Parking in the front, along Faith Church Road, and loading docks in the rear, on the industrial side. Here's a concept elevation, their elevations will be reviewed during site plan review. Here's the existing zoning map. Showing the light industrial zoning that they're asking for. And the SF-5 across, and a lot of RBD around 74. Future land use map shows that area actually as a part of Indian Trail Industrial Park. The star is there. Zoning map recommendation, this is consistent with the comprehensive plan for economic development, it's a reasonable request. Planning board voted to recommend approval at the July 16th meeting, with conditions below. Staff also recommends approval with the conditions. Staff to confirm that Union County Public Works, Environmental Health, Sheriff's Office, and Fire Marshal have made comments, and they're addressed. All vehicular circulation, parking, loading areas will be asphalt or concrete surface, and install the planned landscaping, install with the planned landscaping, a landscaping berm along the Faith Church Road frontage. Install with the planned landscaping a landscaping berm along the Faith Church Road frontage. Originally, the applicant was proposing gravel instead of paving the surface in the rear for the loading area. And we'll want to confirm that condition before that's, we do a final vote on that. So as part of the hearing, we received the information. And if there are any comments, folks signed up for comment.
I'll open and close the public comments, no one's signed up. Does council have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead, Mr. McIntyre.
Can you go back to the previous slide, please?
Absolutely.
So in your last comment before we went to the motions, you mentioned something about the gravel.
Yes.
Does item number two here address that? It does, doesn't it?
Item number two does. The applicant was wanting to plead his case to the very end, and I don't know if he's here.
That's up to you, not necessary. We won't approve gravel anyway.
No.
It's a moot point.
No, it's not a moot point, so...
No, it's not.
No.
We have to...
We need to, we need a conversation about that, and we're going to have to get the applicant's approval with regard to that, what's showing on their plan on that particular topic.
Wasn't the asphalt already part of the staff's?
We, in a conditional zoning, the information that's in on the concept plan is the law of that site. And so that would supersede the UDO. And so on issues that there's some concern about, we're gonna have to get the applicant's acknowledgement that this condition's gonna be met.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Matthew Kershaw with Eagle Engineering, 2013 Vamberian Avenue. Obviously, the beginning part, the LI, getting light industrial, it wasn't a big topping point. It was more the stone in the back. And from that is a new part of your guys' ordinance to start paving the back area. As you can see, Technology Drive and all those light industrial buildings, the rear parking area for loading and all that is in stone in that back area. It's all in the private drive. Town itself doesn't maintain anything on that site. So we're still proposing asphalt for the normal vehicle traffic up front for parking spots and everything like that. But for the ease of maintaining the back area where you're gonna have storage and loading and things like that, that's when we're requesting the stone in the back for the ease of maintaining and the workmanship that you have on the stone. You can see just on Technology Drive, the main drive, the issues that you're having with asphalt, with main tractor trailers and everything going through that area and the maintenance that is required there, even from just that main part, that's a whole strip there. So we're asking for this. And again, we'll go either way on which you guys want. That's why we're asking for the stone because we feel that that is gonna be a better way to maintain that rear area for that loading purposes. That all the cars and stuff will be in the front, be asphalt from the front or from the rear corner up. It's just really the back area where we're gonna have the loading that we're requesting the stone.
Counsel, questions?
Is the Technology Drive, is that a private drive? Do they maintain their road over there, the people who own the...
We're working with them right now to take over that street.
I'd like to make a comment in regard to that. If we get trucks on a roadway, you know, 18-wheelers, they're gonna deteriorate the pavement. So I don't see the point right here referring back to the asphalt pavement to the...
Why are you requesting the asphalt in the rear parking lot if it wasn't to make it a sturdier pavement back there? What we're saying is, like you're saying, asphalt's already gonna tear up. It's easier to maintain a gravel rear parking lot than it is an asphalt rear parking lot. You can't do patches, piece by piece, on asphalt. Or if you have a divot on some stone, you can go back and get a truck ordered in, rolling in that day without having all the equipment coming out to fix it.
Well, let me explain something to you. My experience with 18-wheelers making turns and delivery in back parking lots, especially if they're gravel, I could take you somewhere in town and show you the experience that we have. I mean, it's disastrous the way they are. And property owners don't maintain them. And if you have a creek or a swell, most of the gravel end up there. Now, a quick question for you, where is your storm drainage facility for this site?
It's on the far right-hand corner.
Okay, so it's a pond, right?
It is a pond, yes.
It's just a, UDO requires it, and it requires either flexible or rigid pavement. And we feel that it needs to be one of those two. And just previous experience, we've seen horrible pictures and sites where you have gravel. I mean, you don't even, you're not even proposing, like, next to loading docks or anything, concrete pavement where you have pads too, so...
So whatever we have, this is a flex space. Those don't all guaranteed to have loading docks. Most of those might not have loading docks at all, they might be full office space. This just allows us to be able to put loading docks back there. So if it has a loading dock, obviously there will be a concrete apron around it. For pallet jacks and stuff, you gotta be able to roll that through. But your issue is that you're saying that the maintenance on the stone is what we're having, and that's why I'm presenting Technology Drive that is asphalt, how bad that is. So I don't know if asphalt's any better than stone minus the maintenance on stone is extremely easier to maintain for the individual users.
The other item for council is if we allow one site to do that, then we're setting the precedence to be used throughout the town and the preference is not to do that.
What's the plan and what's your recommendation? Yeah.
Planning, I think.
Planning.
For planning, it's outlined in the UDO as a reduction of dust. And for maintenance, it's in the UDO, and that's what we're following.
Asphalt is in, that's what you're recommending?
It says asphalt or concrete is the choice.
Thank you, that's all I have, that. Planning recommends, that's what we're gonna go, that's what I'm gonna go with.
Any other questions?
Number one, have, has everybody made comments and those comments have been addressed from Union County Public Works, the Sheriff's Office, and Fire Marshal? All those been completed?
Some comments have been provided. Any remaining comments will be provided as part of the site plan review. And so we put that in as a guarantee that we will work with them.
Okay, go ahead.
So, other than it's in the UDO to put asphalt or concrete back there, what's the downside for a business like this to put gravel in the rear? What's the downside for the town?
Well, I mean, there is a big difference between two types of pavements. Asphalt pavement and concrete pavement, they're manageable. You put them, you don't have to worry about them if they're designed right. Concrete lasts for 50 years if it's designed right. Asphalt will last from eight to 12 years. Gravel, it's just, you know, it's a service that you have to continue managing that service. So this is not considering the input of the tenants that they're gonna be there. They're not here today. We don't know how they're gonna react to having that gravel parking lot in the back. So, yes, it is a little bit impervious, but not too pervious. Because when it's compacted by heavy vehicles, it become as impervious as asphalt and concrete. So you have to maintain it, you continuously have to maintain it, and you drag and gravel everywhere, et cetera, et cetera. So our preference is to have concrete or asphalt from both the engineering department and the planning department.
And it's a requirement now?
It's a requirement now.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the burn, excuse me, the buffer.
Yes.
You have a, is that a 10-foot or, yeah, 10-foot landscape buffer at the front for Union, I guess, Highway 74? That's what I'm trying to figure.
That's what's required by the UDO, so we're not changing that.
That's just normal by right buffer that they have along the front of it. So we're not asking for any reduction in the front buffer. We're actually gonna increase it and make it an actual berm based on some of the residential comments that we have. So it won't just be landscaped, we'll actually make a small berm on the front of it as well.
Okay, good. I had listened to some of those comments and wanted to be sure they were incorporated.
It's a 20-foot landscape berm on the front of it.
Well, that's in the front, that's on Faith Church, but on, you've got a 10-foot around the back and the side.
That's backing upright to light industrial. So that there's only, it's like use on both sides of it. So it'd be like, the cul-de-sac already wraps up to that. So even if we were turning back and we can connect to Technology Drive, it would go within the uses that are all there.
Okay, that's what I could, I could find that picture.
I expect, it's not 74, box up and put the other piece, that's all.
So, let's move on.
Just one second, Karen.
I'm sorry.
So what we need to do, we need closure on the rear pavement issue. And so what we can do here is if the board decides, or the council decides to take the staff engineer recommended advice and require asphalt, then that will need to be a condition, and we will have to get the applicant's approval on the mic before that can actually become part of this ordinance. And so I just wanna make sure that we've got our ducks in a row here as we move through this process. So council needs to make a decision on what, if they do want to add that condition at this point in time.
Do we need a recess to do that?
Nope, you can all chat about it right here and then make the decision.
I'm just being facetious, that's all.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, and let's vote on it. If you wanna put asphalt in the back, let's put asphalt in the back, let's go.
But we have a unanimous decision on that or none?
Well, I mean...
Yeah, I wanna put stone in the back. I wanna give that option up to the tenants.
So, well...
That's the worst question. I wanted to leave it to the end user to have it. So we're gonna put stone down if they want asphalt for their project that they have. But again, for us on maintenance-wise, that's why we're requesting the stone in there.
I will not approve this with stone. Staff asks for asphalt, that's what I'm, that's how I'm gonna approve this. So that's, you need to either...
That's what I was saying, unless, well, I think we're all agreeing to that, so let's...
Okay, well, here's what I can do. So what I'll read is a fourth condition that says the rear parking lot will be required to have rigid or flexible pavement.
It's already in number two on this.
It's on there.
Is that the, I didn't know if that referred to that rear parking lot or if that was just...
That's the parking lot they're talking about.
That's what they're talking about? Well, I'd like some clarification because apparently your plan shows asphalt.
It does, because this was then, when we go on the planning board, those are just recommendations to you guys on the decision that the Town Council makes. So that was their recommendation, the staff's recommendation up to this point. Again, I would still request the stone in the back until you guys have to decide not to go with the stone. And then that condition would still be part of the rezoning there.
Okay, so, all right, so there's no confusion with anybody about the rear parking lot and the rest of the vehicular parking and asphalt or concrete. So let's just say it out loud, and that we have this on the record, that you all have consented to do asphalt or concrete parking.
Unloading areas, right?
In the unloading areas and in the rear parking area.
So he, but what he's, he hasn't agreed to that. What he's saying, he still wants to put stone, so he needs to accept that or...
This is me asking you, you guys saying, no, I'm now agreeing to stick with the asphalt on the back or asphalt or concrete.
Perfect, that's what we need to do, yes, that's what we need to have. We need to have that in the record that he agreed to the asphalt in the rear. So with that, I will shut up.
All right, Ms. Stew.
Okay. Any other discussion?
And if, sorry to bring up a third thing, but if we're good with number three also, I think you mentioned you're good with the berm.
Yeah, we're good with the berm.
Good with the berm.
One more thing, the only thing I would ask is if, do we wanna confirm that it's a 20-foot berm in this condition? Because that's not a UDO requirement. It's on the site plan, is one?
Yeah. It's part of the attachment.
Excellent, okay.
So you can go to the next slide now.
Thank you.
So...
Nope, he has to read the consistency findings.
Please go ahead.
I'll read the consistency statement in the positive. "The proposed UDO amendment is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan. Economic development goal number one, create a more balanced tax base by promoting the development of office parks, businesses, retail centers, and industrial parks. Promote a diverse local economy that will support varied employment opportunities. This rezoning request is a reasonable request and is in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of economic development."
Okay, we need two motions.
So, motion one. Make the required consistency findings as read into record by staff and also follow in the recommendations of the planning board and the planning department.
Okay, Mr. McIntyre has made the motion, all in favor? That would be unanimous, we need a second motion.
Motion two would be a final decision to approve as presented and read into the record by staff based on the recommendations by the planning board and the planning department.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to approve, all in favor?
Thank you.
Mr. Morse, was your hand up or down?
Up.
Okay, so that's unanimous. Okay, thank you. That brings us to all business, item A, agency donation requests from Turning Point and Council on the Aging.
I'll take that one.
Mr. McIntyre?
Yes, sir. A couple weeks ago, we had these two groups who came before us asking for some sort of funding. We said we would get them an answer. It's been a couple weeks, I felt let's just kinda make a decision on that and move on. We do have some monies, I think Mr. Walderitz is here, is he? Is there? I think you did, we did have some money left over from last year that we did, we were able to transfer in the amount of $1,000. Based on the budget that we have this year, which is adopted, we have $4,000 available total because one plus three equals four. So I'm gonna make a recommendation to council. Mr. Coon, did I say something funny, sir?
He's an accountant. Really, he really is, I'm not kidding you.
But that being said, I would like to make a recommendation that we make a donation to these two entities. I'm gonna propose that we donate $1,000 to each one, and I'll turn it over to council for comments.
Any comments or discussion? Okay, Mr. McIntyre has made a motion to donate $1,000 to Turning Point and $1,000 to the Council on Aging, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate your assistance on that.
Thank you. Brings us to item B, capital improvement program update. Mr. Sedik, the floor's yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have a slide for that?
It's in the directory because it was too wide.
As we do every year, and as requested also by a couple council members, our communication coordinator, every month, we're gonna try to put that on our internet newsletter. And also, it will be on the hard copy of the newsletter. And simply, these are all the projects that we're working on right now. The budget that you see on the left-hand side is in the budget book. And the red line that you see in the middle, this is where we at. So periodically, we'll provide council with an update. On the right-hand side, you see that I terminated the project at the end of the fiscal year. That's for budget purposes. Some of these projects may be completed before the end of the fiscal year, and some may extend beyond that. So I think as we move forward with this project, we will continue to make the changes so council could see impact on budget and on the schedule. But we do have now about 25 projects, Monroe Road is included. A lot of these projects also, they've already been completed, pavement marking, pavement markers, patching, crack foreing, all those have been completed. And the rest is still ongoing. So what you see in gray is all transportation-related. And what you see in green is parks, and at the bottom, all the stormwater. And also, this slide will be one of our presentation that we're gonna share with Union County on August 28th, just to kinda give them an idea about our transportation projects in case they have infrastructure underneath any of these projects. So we will coordinate and we'll make sure we're not taking up each other's project. But this is the format that we're gonna be sharing. But thi- this is the format that we're gonna be sharing with, with the public HOA and our council every month in our electronic newsletter. And on the hard copy, probably will have Excel spreadsheet because this, this software, it takes too much space and we don't take an entire page out of the entire newsletter, which is four pages. But any questions from council? I know, Mr. Morse, you ask for document like that, so I'll turn it to you and council.
Ah, this is great. ID number seven, the resurfacing eighteen, nineteen, is that the typo? Or is that nineteen, twenty?
You're absolutely right, so it should be nineteen, twenty.
But I like this. This is great. And it's gonna go on the website as well?
Yes, sir.
Sweet. Good job, guys.
Abby, is it on the website? We completed this today, so tomorrow will be on the website.
Sorry, I have a quick question. Um, the first item, the forty-six million dollars. When I read that, I would think that the town is spending forty-six million dollars, but I know the town is not, right?
Simply what you're looking at is the total cost of the project.
Okay, so probably that's one of the things when we put it out there.
We'll go ahead and maybe title it total of the cost of the project.
Yeah, total cost of project.
Our share in.
Yeah, that way we can differentiate just to, yeah, that's all. Thank you. Good document. Appreciate it.
And I think we need, you know, the, the first thing I looked at was Monroe widening and I saw seven, one. Oh, it's completed twenty, twenty-seven, one? I think we need some clarification so that, that, you know, our residents, when they look at it, understand that this is just through the, well, let me ask you a question, but then you've got eight, twenty-one on Sardis. So I'm trying to understand.
I'll be more than happy to clarify.
Okay.
Any completion date for the projects that we are hundred percent sure, we're putting it there. Anything we're not, we just put in the end of the fiscal year. So as I mentioned, as we move forward with this and we know more about the completion date, we will add them per project. So what we're gonna do, Mr., we're gonna add footnotes to this, clarifying some of these questions that you're bringing up before us.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm a little slow then, so, so, all right. The first one says it's continuing because it's ending in July. The second one will be completed.
Eighty, twenty-one, two thousand twenty, that's because at the end of the school, we have to finish it before the beginning of the, the new school year. So we're hundred percent sure. We have no choice. We have to finish it. That's why we put that date in there.
So it'll be completed by August the twenty-first?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, sir.
The next one is November thirtieth.
That's right.
All right.
And we'll be more, I mean, we're putting it before council for your recommendations tonight. You decide on what kind of product you want, we'll be more than happy to modify it based on what would you like. So but like I said, this is a, this is done by a software, Microsoft project. We, we could add time, we, we could do it cost-loaded, et cetera, et cetera. But this is just something simple that we could put on our newsletter as some council members requested.
As long as, you know, everybody understands that, that the seven, one date means it's continuing.
Yes, sir. And on the budget, what we'll do, if it, if anything goes under budget, above budget, we'll, we'll color the item and we'll clarify it to council during the next meeting.
Any other questions? No. Is that it, Patrick?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to intermunicipal info sharing, meeting schedule and location. Mr. Head, the floor is yours, sir.
All right. So I actually was not, I was on vacation last week. But, but what, what we're looking at doing, the meeting schedule will continue to be, and just so everybody understands what we're talking about, is that, hmm, three months ago, I went through all municipalities looking at a date that made sense for everybody. And the first Wednesday of the month made sense and all the members that are, are coming now have approved that. The, the second thing is what we're looking at is maybe changing the location. Maybe we, we go to different municipalities. Maybe it's, you know, maybe it's, you know, in the back room of Hickory Tavern that, that we have. So that it's not a burden on any one organization and that, you know, just kinda spread it around. So that's, that's what we're looking at.
Is that, is that it, Mr. Head?
Yes.
Any questions? Kelly?
If we're gonna just do that, or is that, is that done? So from now on, you won't be coming here? Are you gonna be meeting in Hickory Tavern or, or what?
We'll probably have to meet, I don't, I don't think there was any, anything approved at the last meeting, right?
No, we're just gonna make it up as we go.
Yeah.
Pretty much just agree to a, a good, good place to land and.
Will this be the last meeting here then?
Yes.
Okay. I was just curious.
Okay, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Karen for a moment, please.
Once again, I just wanna clarify, this is not a town sanctioned committee and that these are individual elected officials from across Western Union County who meet. And there are, just I want that clear, that they do not speak on behalf of the town of Indian Trail when they are attending these meetings. So once again, just to clarify.
Any other discussion on this matter? No. Thank you, Mr. Head. That brings us to the comprehensive plan update. Mr. Sedik?
I'm gonna turn this to Mr. Morse. I think he requested this item.
Okay.
Yeah, and as we've spoke about this evening, we have a meeting with Union County, county commissioners and their planning department later on this month. What's the, what's driving this is the, the growth here in Western Union County and across Union County, period. But it's been, we've determined that we are outdated on the comprehensive plan. And when I say we, the county has recognized this. There's been so much growth and so many different visions from the different towns that they, they're gonna get together and, and review their comprehensive plan that was just done in twenty fourteen, I believe. They believe this is gonna be done in-house and, and actually on the twenty-ninth of this month, they'll get more information to us as far as, you know, what it's gonna involve. So knowing that our comprehensive plan was developed in two thousand five, updated in oh-eight, two thousand twelve, maybe wrong, maybe thirteen, but it's been six or seven years since we've looked at it. And I think it would be appropriate and the timing may be right that we start at least discussing this. And, and maybe we, not that we're looking to do this right now because comprehensive plan is a big deal. Because we have to incorporate the downtown master plan that was done in two thousand six. There's a pedestrian plan, a bicycle master plan, the economic development plan. So I just wanted to at least get us talking about it so that here in the next month or two or, you know, when, once these meetings start happening, that this isn't brand-new to, to anyone and, and so we can give it some, some serious thought. I, I'll send out this link to you guys later. It's just, I, I went on the website to find the different parts of the comprehensive plan and I've just kinda bundled everything here with some thoughts. And just so that maybe you wanna review it in your leisure. I know you have a lot of that anymore. But that was it, pretty much it. It's just that we need to look at it.
Any questions? Patrick, did you wanna speak?
I'd just like to make a comment. I, I totally agree with Mr. Morse. I think I brought it before council, probably six, seven months ago. But not in a way to revamp the entire comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is a big document and it, it had many things in it. And I, I, and I know you would like to carry the discussion, but a lot of items in the comprehensive plan right now, we are accomplishing. And what I'd like to understand is, is what's motivating changes to the comprehensive, comprehensive plan? Is it because of another jurisdiction change in the comprehensive plan? I think, you know, we need to kinda coordinate, but we need to keep our comprehensive plan. But I want to just take one minute just to give you some example of the things that we're accomplishing right now and comprehensive plans can be updated. And I do agree, Mr. Morse, that some items we could do in-house, but if we wanna revamp the entire document, definitely we, we will rely on a third party and their experience. And we're talking about a document that might cost about a hundred thousand dollars and it might take probably minimum six to eight months. It's just because of, it's a big document. The last item I'd like to mention is if we do have thirty development out there on the, in the pot and they came in before council and they presented, I think what they presented out there is what is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So if, if, we have to decide, if council decide on making any changes, we need to kinda take those developments into consideration. But you're absolutely right. We're working on downtown, we're working on trails, we're working on parking, the transportation system. So all these items right now that we're working on, we're trying to, they do comply with the comprehensive plan. But definitely it, there could be some changes out there and we are familiar with it. We, we flagged all of them, so we'll be ready when council decide to carry on the conversation.
Thank you, Patrick. Any other questions? Nope. That brings us to the Panthers Field update.
Good evening. We are excited that work is beginning on the artificial field across the street at Chestnut Square Park. Work's beginning, should be finished up at the end of September. Patrick, myself, and Seth Carroll from our Park and Recreation Department met with Riley Fields last week to discuss the grand opening event for when the, the, the field's officially done. We're in the beginning stages of planning for all of that, but the event will be held on October seventh at seven P.M. And we'll be working with youth athletic associations, athletic programs at the local schools to make it a really big, fun event. We're hoping that some of the Panthers players, cheerleaders, the owner will be out there to celebrate with us. So we're hoping to make it just a really big, fun, community-wide event. As I said, we're just in the very beginning stages of planning, so as more details are finalized, we'll communicate those with council and with residents.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do, I actually wanna offer my help. I know that the Panthers are coming to you. Definitely need some younger kids who play football to kinda show possible use. So I'll, I will reach out to some of the athletic associations. The only challenge with that is, for instance, Porter Ridge Athletic Association does have a youth football program, but it's the Porter Ridge, it's the Ravens, because the NFL, you can only use NFL names and there's no Pirates in the NFL. There is a team, I think, out of Mint Hill or out of Matthews, that it, that there are the Panthers. So I'll try and get in touch with them as well. I'll also reach out to Porter Ridge High School and Sun Valley because they have, you know, middle school teams and high school and see if they would be, that's sort of what you need, right, in terms of the participation from the local programs, right?
Correct, yes. And I believe, so I'll, I'll, I'll work with Seth and connect you with Seth, 'cause I know he's starting to reach, make some connections to you.
Let me know if you need my help. I'll be more than happy to help.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Brings us to Indian Trail Stormwater Improvements Update. Mr. Hunt Sager?
Counsel, Mayor, just wanna give you an update on this study. Right now, we initiated the first study in April and we're trying to do improvements within our right-of-way of those roadways in Grover Moore. I know you, you've seen this map before, not this exact map, but a map similar to this. Basically, again, Grover Moore has been impacted by Brandon Oaks for the most part and then a little bit on the, the Kinnear Lee side of, of that subdivision. Well, we, we initiated the study. We decided to look at alternatives. So we, we looked at maybe doing a dry detention and we found there's complications with that. So we decided, okay, let's look at one more option. And this is the one you're seeing in front of you. So first option was to try to improve the existing ditches along the right-of-way. The, the second option was dry detention, which is not feasible. And now we're looking at backyard drainage ditch, which would catch, if you look at the blue line up top of the map, where it's coming off Olmer Road and it's coming off of Brandon Oaks Parkway. All that water, it's, it's a good amount of water. You got, you got a huge drainage basin going towards there. And so we wanna grab that drainage, take it with the backyard ditch and basically relieve a lot of the water that's going along the roadway in front of these people's yards. Well, I'm, I'm bringing this back to, to you because we had a, I had a meeting earlier before this meeting with the homeowners. As you can see, there's thirteen lots that are designated on that map. And I wanted to bring them in to get, to basically kinda give them an update of what's going on because obviously they don't have any idea or if they don't come to council meetings, have any idea what's about this study. So gave them a little update. Basically told them, you know, out of the three options, obviously the dry detention's out the door. So I wanted to present this option and to keep with the initial study option of upgrading the ditch and their driveways. I spoke to them. I won't get into too, too much detail, but basically laid it out there about the ditch. I asked them, they do have septic in the back, which shouldn't be a great issue because of, it's a, that they're, the designation, they, they've been told by previous owners and real estate agents that about ten to fifteen feet off the back of the house is pretty much where the septic is. So we would have room to do the work and not disturb that. But again, I gave them options, said, look, we can, we can take a lot of this water and then you wouldn't have, we had, we wouldn't do any upgrades in front of your, your house and your driveways, no disturbances. And we could do all that work, catch all that water in the backyards and get it going down. Or we can go in there, we can improve your ditches in front of your yard and we can upgrade your driveways and pipes. And from the homeowners that are there at that meeting, they felt like the, the option of keeping the work in the right, right-of-way was the best option. So what we do as a staff now, we'll go back, we'll look at both options as far as feasibility, as far as cost, and then move forward. But again, we're just gonna give you update because we had a meeting about it today. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Brings us to new business, Town Information System.
Hello again. Just wanted to give you an update on where we are with some of the information systems throughout the town. As far as hardware goes, we are in the process of upgrading computers and tablets as they become obsolete and as needed. Town cell phones, same thing. All the town cell phones that are eligible for a free upgrade, we are doing. So I, we did about, I think, twenty-six or twenty-eight recently. And then as the other ones come through, we'll update those as well. Software, we're purchasing and getting upgrading software as some of the programs become obsolete, such as the Microsoft Office Suite. So, you know, we have the most up-to-date programs and, and software available. Something that we're looking at is cloud computing. This is something that our consultant is kind of testing out with the town manager. And this would provide some, some benefits. People would be able to work remotely pretty much anywhere. So if they're out at meetings or, you know, be able to work from home a little easier in the evenings if they needed to or some, if something comes up, there's storage available, some free software, automatic upgrades. We could lease the software instead of having to just purchase things that then become obsolete after a year or two. There are some potential disadvantages. I mean, it's the cloud, there's always security concerns, but those are there anyway. Internet access, if something would happen to go down for a while, and then always the third-party reliance. But we're kind of looking at it. Right now, we're thinking that maybe the advantages might outweigh the disadvantages, but it's something we're testing and wouldn't make a decision on until we're fully sure of where that would lead. This networking and communication, we're working with H.R. to develop some policies for staff, such as social media use, to ensure that we are compliant in all of our town communication. Everyone's being consistent, doing the same thing, and we're all legal and covered. And we'll just continue to kind of look at future trends like. And we'll just continue to kind of look at future trends like the cloud computing and our processes to make sure just we are on top of it and everything is out there to achieve our goals as far as I.T. and communication. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the A.B.C. Store Feasibility Study, uh, information. Mr. Sedik?
Uh, if it's possible, uh, Mr. Mayor, if we could table this, this, uh, item until a later time, we just need more information.
No problem.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Okay, we've got that. All right, that brings, any other updates you wanna give, Patrick? We're up to you.
No, sir, this is what I have for right now. I'd just like to say we're working on a new format for the manager's report. Something a bit different, the smaller, that you could read, maybe two to three pages rather than doing the lengthy one. So as soon as Abby and I, we get something together, we will check it with council. Unless council has any questions in regard to any of the projects or, uh, items that we're working on.
No, we're good. Okay, that brings us to council comments. Karen?
Sorry. My one job.
Mm-hmm.
Mike Head.
Record time. Um, thanks for everybody attending. It's been a good meeting. Uh, I'm not going, I'm, I'm, uh, it's nice to get out of here while it's still light outside. So, um, still drive home safely and have a good evening.
Mayor Alboz?
Uh, just wanna thank the town staff and Union County Sheriff's Office and all first responders for a great national night out. It was a great program. Again, thanks for all the deputies that got into the dunk tank. Unfortunately, Chase isn't here right now, but I'm sure he'll hear this later. And where, where is he?
Sitting right there, man.
Oh, gosh, oh, there you are. Did you wanna do your law enforcement updates? I couldn't see you over there.
I stopped you from saying bad things about him, man.
I was gonna say something, but I thought surely you saw him.
I saved you from saying bad things about him, man.
Well, that, that takes the rest of my comments away then. Did you have anything you wanted to say, Chase?
Young go ahead and finish and.
And then you'll go?
It's at the, I've got a minute or two if you want to.
Yeah, yes.
That's fine. Other than that, thank you, Chase, for what you did the other night and all that are with you. And, um, thanks, council, for everything. And remember to, kiddos are back in school. Pay attention when you drive, 'cause they certainly don't pay attention when they walk. Um, other than that, everybody, have a good night and God bless.
Mr. Cohen?
Thanks for coming. See you next time.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, um, it was good having a couple of residents bring some concerns to us and, and that was Ms. Fur. I'm glad she, she brought that up. Anytime a process can be improved. And, and, um, to Ms. Fielding, who brought the issue about the blue-green algae. You know, we do have a lot of bee, um, ponds in Indian Trail. Is that part of the inspection process?
Uh, yes, uh, we, this is the, by the way, this is the first time we began inspecting. Uh, we did send letter, uh, about a month ago. We followed up with a second letter. We require an every pond owner to hire a P.E. to inspect that pond, whether it's a retention, detention, and send us the report. We review the report. If we're satisfied with the report, then that's fine. We'll catch it next year. If not, we will visit the job site and take it from there. So algae, we did visit that a couple of years ago and we're keeping an eye on, on that. So definitely, and I thank you for bringing it before our attention, Todd and I will drive to the site and look at it too.
And we should let the community know that you're working.
Absolutely, Abby, uh, if we could do that. I, I think what we'll do is we'll, since we're implementing this program the first year, we'll go ahead and put something on our website in regard to that. Thank you.
Everyone have a good night.
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, everyone. Staff, again, I appreciate all that you do. Drive home safe. Have a good night. Chase, still my guy, man.
Okay, Chase, do you have an update you wanna give us real quick?
Only about an hour.
All right, no problem.
So real quick, just a couple of things, um, to follow up with what the mayor said. He's taking my thunder on one of them, but with school starting back, we just encourage everybody to pay a little bit of attention, give a little bit of extra time leaving home. Buses are out and our guys are gonna be out as well. We've already picked some target areas where we're gonna be doing some traffic enforcement on. And, uh, so in and around the first couple of weeks of school getting started, so I don't want you guys to be on the list of the recipients of our targeted areas. So anybody that's listening, we would prefer not to write tickets. So National Night Out was a good event. Um, if you didn't get a chance to, to see any of the pictures yet, um, on our Facebook page, we've got a ton of pictures from, from here and, uh, thought it was a, a, just an awesome event. Hayden and Parks and Recreation staff did a good job of putting that together, um, for us. And the only thing I want to add is, in your next contract negotiation for your manager, you may want to put something about him getting in the dunk tank. Be encouraged strongly for, for participation from people that are sitting back there beside the attorney. But anyway, if.
I'll give my boo that.
Thank you, Patrick. So, but we had a good time out there. Kids had a good time. Um, you may have seen on our Facebook page, we actually used it here recently, back in the end of, uh, July, to put out for an incident that happened on Wesley Chapel, Stout Row, Wesley Chapel Road down there. Gold Mine had a road raid, road rage incident that wound up with a gentleman pulling a handgun out. Um, you know, be aware of your surroundings. We don't ever know who's in the other car around us, what their day's been like. You know, if they've been getting nagged on or if they got fired, lost their job or what's, what's causing it. But if you need to, pull over, give them a mile or two down the road before you pull back on and continue your way. But we had a gentleman that lost his cool out there near the roundabout near Sheridan. Got out and, uh, pointed a handgun and ended up discharging it, um, over to the side, but was making some threats. But our Facebook page panned out for us. We put out a good description, got a, got a, uh, good leads back on it and was able to charge a twenty-five-year-old gentleman with those crimes out there. So we are currently still, um, under construction in our parking lot next door. Um, at the Blithe Buildings, what we've always called it, but the old town hall and, and the building that we're occupying now. But they're moving on really good and while they're doing that, we're talking through some, uh, landscape features and some other things. I've got a flagpole on the way, should be getting delivered to put out front. So I have a new flagpole and doing some fencing around back after they get done with that. And one of the things that we're most excited about is I just, uh, took delivery today of a new, uh, video recording system, which will expand the number of cameras that we've got on that facility. Um, we're gonna take the recording system that we have currently there now and move it over to Crickety Creek Park to enhance what we've got on video cameras over there. Um, and then hopefully we'll be able to create, what we wanna do is our target goal is to create a safe exchange zone over here at this building so that if you're selling an item on OfferUp, Craigslist, Amazon, uh, I mean, not Amazon, but a Facebook Marketplace, something like that. Um, a lot of times we, you know, we've always encouraged people to meet in a public place, uh, meet where other people are at, things like that. But we'd certainly like to, uh, look at going out and spray painting all over the new parking lot once we get it paved and, and have some lines out there that says, you know, exchange zone. We'll have a camera focused on that area so that we'll be able to get multiple angles and views. And so, you know, give you a little bit of safe reassurance. I'll come out here and meet with somebody in front of the sheriff's office, you know, sell my product. And certainly we don't wanna have a, a Saturday afternoon farmer's market out there with all kinds of things being sold. So we're hoping that we won't get that much use out of it. But I do think that the one time it saves somebody from, from getting, you know, robbed or something, taken from them. And we've had that happen with tennis shoes being sold and things like that, cell phones. Uh, just recently, if you guys remember, we had the Walmart incident where the guy got the phone stolen from him and he decided to be a good idea to shoot up in the air a few times to get his phone back. And while it worked for him, he ended up getting a couple of criminal charges with that as well, but. So we're just hoping to give everybody a little bit, a little bit of a safer area to do their, do their buying and selling off of Craigslist and all, so. All right, that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chase.
Chase, so if, if I wanna sell something in exchange and agree to meet somebody there and they're pulling up and they go, now, hey, wait a minute, that's in front of the sheriff's office, how about meet me down at Walmart?
Yeah.
Probably not a good thing, is it?
If they don't like coming over there, there's one of two things. Either they've been drinking. They don't have a driver, one of three, or they don't have a driver's license or insurance. Or, yeah, I would, I would say if I were recommending to somebody, if you offered to meet, hey, let's meet at the sheriff's office here in downtown Indian Trail. We're right here in the middle of the, middle of the town. If, if somebody says no, that's not a good spot for you, then I'd say I'm gonna leave my money in my pocket and keep shopping, 'cause there's something probably amiss with that. But just be careful whenever you're doing online purchases. It's good. I do it, you know, browse all day on there and, and look sometimes for, uh, for, you know, truck parts and dirt bikes and things like that. It's a good way not to spend retail price to go get something new. Let somebody else get it, use it a little bit. You know, save a lot of money off of it, but at the same time, you gotta be careful whenever you're meeting. And I always tell everybody, I've never bought or sold anything and met at my house. I always meet at a school or at a, in a public place where somebody can, you know, where I know there's a camera around, so to find you a business or something. But we're hoping that's gonna be an amenity that we get to offer over there, so.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. This time we have a closed session with NCGS one-four-three, three-one-eight, one-one-eight-five to establish and instruct the staff or agent concerning negotiations of the amount of compensation or other terms of an employment contract. I need a motion to go into closed session, please.
So moved, Mr. Moore.
Morse made the motion. All in favor? Okay. Motion to go into a second closed session, please? I'm just guessing what you're, Mr. Morse made a motion to come out of closed session. I mean, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Mr. Mark McIntyre has made a motion to adjourn. Both are unanimous. Everyone have a good night.
Thank you very much, everyone. I will see you. Listen, I'm gonna run. It's my son's eleventh birthday, but I'm a councilor, so I will dedicate.